I'd like to call the village board meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Press number?
Here.
Trustee Cook?
Here.
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 Trustee Markward?
Here.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Here.
Trustee Takaoka?
Here.
We have a quorum present. Would everybody please stand for the pledge of allegiance? Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. Are there any citizens that want to address the board tonight?
With the village issue.
Okay.
Oh, yeah.
All right. Well, village manager, declaration 21-06.
Yes, sir. Just a reminder again, village president will be signing declaration number 21-06. That's the emergency declaration order. Been in effect for almost a year now. This will extend until the next board meeting and hopefully not too much longer thereafter. Next quick announcement is the next meeting, the next regularly scheduled village board meeting will be Wednesday, April 7th. Normally would have been the 6th, but Tuesday, the 6th, but due to the elections, it's been postponed for a day. It'll be Wednesday, the 7th. And the next thing I wanted to give the board an update on and ask for your input, or at least some input on this, is the village manager selection process. As you know, the selection or the application period ended just a little over a week ago, week ago Monday. There were 76 total applicants for the position. Gov HR is in the process of conducting preliminary screening interviews and assessing the viability of all the candidates that have applied. Tentatively, they will be presenting us with a list of eight to 10 highly qualified candidates for our review on April 1st. Representatives of Gov HR want to come to the village hall to speak to whoever, whatever group or parties are interested from the village. Talk a little bit about the background of the candidates that were excluded and why, and then explain why this list of candidates they consider to be highly qualified. We will then re, we will then review the candidates as a staff and try to reduce that number to four to five candidates, which will be invited to come back for an interview with a select group. They want to start the interviews on or around April 12th. From there, we should be able to identify the best qualified candidate. And at some point, depending upon the preference of the board, one, two, or three can be invited in under executive session to be interviewed separately by the board, if that's your desire. And the question I have tonight, then, is how much involvement do the individual board members wish to have in the process? And at what point in the process do you want to become involved?
I'll open that up to the, to the board.
If I could make a comment, I think, you know, and when you mentioned that before, as far as the vetting process, I think most importantly, the staff needs to have these conversations and interviews with these potential candidates. And I think the village board shouldn't get involved until after the staff has vetted their final three candidates or so.
With that being said, though, I offer myself to mark to be part of a group think to establish any overarching criteria to ensure that there is a certain level of continuity that I think a board member could, in fact, bring to the process.
I think two of us can come there.
I agree. I think they.
And then, and then just bring back, well, four or five at the most to the full board.
Right. So my recommendation would be then, based on what I've heard, unless anyone feels differently, on April 1st, I'll ask for two members of the board. I'll confirm the date with Gov HR. Ask for two members of the board to be here. Gov HR can come in, present their list of eight to 10 candidates, and then we can discuss the criteria. Again, then my recommendation would be to take the, the material from those eight or 10 candidates circulated amongst the department heads and get together as a staff and try to reduce that number to the four or five candidates. At that point, I can let the board know and we'll set up the interviews and if there's one or two board members that wish to participate in the interview process.
At, at that point, now I'm on the Craig's side of the fence. I mean, establishing the criteria and being part of the group think is something I'd like to participate in. I don't, I think yourself and, and the staff would be adequate for winnowing through. And then, again, when we get down to the, the final top candidates, then I think at that point, I'd like to rejoin as I think all the board would.
Sure. Then, other than trustee Schultz, who else would like to participate in the interviews? Or at least the initial screening?
I would be interested.
Initial screening, yeah, I would, I wouldn't mind.
That's fine.
Because you're looking at, what, you said 13 individuals?
Yeah, it'll be eight, eight to 10 is what they've said. They'll come in and present that, that list and the reasons why they feel those are the most highly qualified. And then we'll take that list as staff, review it amongst ourselves, and come up with the final list of interviewees. And then we'll keep you apprised of that situation. All right, thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay. All right. That's good. Next is Chief Kreese. Flak camera update.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. During the budget presentation a couple of weeks ago, a few questions were asked and I promised to report back to the board when there was a success story. And I wanted to share with the board that shortly after that, in fact, a week ago Friday, we had a scenario where some of our cameras picked up and alerted our dispatch center to a stolen car entering a neighborhood. We dispatched officers to the area. Before they got there, we got another dispatch from another camera that the same stolen car was seen leaving the neighborhood. Because we shared communications with Mundaline, our officers, Mundaline officers looked for the vehicle, we're lucky enough to find it. It stopped at a nearby gas station. The subjects were approached and detained for further investigation. And the driver of the vehicle, a past felon, was determined to be responsible for the stolen vehicle and was in possession of a loaded firearm and in possession of controlled substances. So this all occurred at about 7:30 PM on a Friday night. And there were other people in the car as well that weren't eventually charged. But I'd like to think that, you know, that's the kind of success by being able to identify, in this case, apprehend and appropriately charge people. Perhaps they weren't in the, in the interest of doing anything wrong that particular night, but, oh, and, and the driver also had an outstanding arrest warrant for other crimes. So just a real good example, it's, it's, and we have other successes and there's some investigation going on right now I just don't want to speak publicly about, but they, these cameras have helped us. I think when we can relocate some of them to the odd right of ways, they're going to be even more helpful. And I'll probably have more successes like this to share with the board. So that I'll answer. Did you have a question, trustee?
No, no, I was just saying, you were, you were suggesting they weren't necessarily in the process of doing anything wrong, other than driving a stolen vehicle.
Correct. With a gun.
With a gun.
With drugs.
And drugs.
And an outstanding warrant.
And an outstanding. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Maybe they wouldn't have committed another crime.
Another crime. At least not in our community.
Maybe, maybe not. We know they, they didn't commit another crime that night because they were, you know, stopped, so. And while I have your attention, if you wouldn't mind, I don't know if Mr. Stortle can bring up in a link there, the good doctor, trustee Oppenheim's been volunteered to participate with me and other members of the, the police department, who are going to be participating in the St. Baldry's Rock the Bald event at, that would normally be held at Hawthorne Mall. Because it's, because of the pandemic, we can't collect all together at once, but instead, trustee Oppenheim, myself, and other member of the staff are gonna, are gonna have our head shaved virtually next Monday afternoon. We'll be sure to post that on social media. But I bring it up because it really is a great cause for fighting childhood cancer. If anybody would like to, to make a donation, they can go to the St. Baldry's, look for the Rock the Bald at Hawthorne or the Vernon Hills Police Department. Those are two ways to get to our team name and make a contribution. That'd be a wonderful thing to do for children that are suffering from cancer, so. And thank you, trustee Oppenheim, for your, your support and participation. And it's not too late for anyone else that wants to, to give up their locks.
Several of us did it a few years ago, and I've been told at home that I'm not doing it again.
I nominate trustee Takaoka to join me.
Yeah.
Who nominated me last time.
You to say when you only got a sixteenth of a, had a hair to shave off.
I know.
That concludes my report before I get someone in trouble.
I remember doing it a few years back.
Yeah.
You know, it was out. Yeah, and I think I raised several thousands of dollars, and that was a good deal.
I think we still have those pictures of.
Oh, I'm sure somebody's got, you know. Okay. Thank you, chief. All right. Next is the end of his vote agenda. I want to keep. Lick my finger to turn the page. Is there a motion to approve items A through I?
So made. Second.
Motion is second. Any comments or questions? If not, roll call.
Trustee Markward?
Aye.
Trustee Forster?
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Aye.
Trustee Cook?
Aye.
Trustee Takaoka?
Aye.
Trustee Schultz?
Aye.
President Burr?
Aye. Okay, motion carries. Unfinished additional business. Approval and passes of resolution 2021-005, a resolution in support of the Illinois House Bill 3372 amending the Flag Display Act by adding section 11.
Again, sir, at the last board meeting, staff was directed to draft a resolution in support of House Bill 3372. Staff has done that. A copy of the resolution, draft resolution was placed in your board packets for your review. If everyone has seen it and has no comments, a motion would need to be made to approve that resolution.
Motion so made.
Second.
Motion is second. Any comments or questions? If not, roll call.
Trustee Schultz?
Aye.
Trustee Cook?
Aye.
Trustee Takaoka?
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Aye.
Trustee Markward?
Aye.
Trustee Forster?
Aye.
President Burr?
Aye. Motion carries.
Just as a follow-up comment, on Tuesday, last Tuesday night, AMVET Post 66 in Wheeling adopted a similar resolution, and that was passed on to Representative Didich, who also is the representative for the physical location of AMVET Post 66. The American Legion Post of Vernon Hills will be looking at adopting a similar resolution this coming Saturday. VFW Post 1337 is looking at their next regular meeting to adopt a similar resolution. So from my part, I want to thank staff for drafting the initial resolution that some of these others have culled from to generate their resolutions. Again, for those that aren't familiar, at all public buildings within the state of Illinois, the governor has authority to lower the flags to half-staff at any time that he sees fit. Typically, it's done on the, upon the death of a significant fixture person in, in America, former presidents, Supreme Court justices, folks of that nature. Specifically in the state of Illinois, Governor Quinn started a program where any service member who lost their life in action would be so honored by having the flag flown at half-staff on all public buildings on the day of his funeral or memorial service. As a result, though, Governor Pritzker's order that he put in place last April put the flags at half-staff since mid-last April, which is almost a year. And he did that as a commemoration of the folks that had lost their lives to COVID. And while I deeply understand that COVID has impacted our lives, we've had a number of police officers and service members who have not been honored by this act of lowering the flags to half-staff because basically on a semi-permanent basis, they've been at half-staff. This law, if passed, will limit the governor's authority to the maximum number of days authorized in the U.S. flag code, which now stands at 30 days. So that is what I personally would like to see happen. And these resolutions are asking that the legislative bodies take that cause up and, in fact, pass House Bill 3372. So that's what that's all about. Thank you for the time.
Yeah. No, it's, it's the right thing to do. Hopefully it gets support down in Springfield, you know. All right. Next is approval and passes of resolution 2021-006. Resolution granting approval to operate an outdoor merchandise display and sales establishment for the Lowe's located at 1660 North Milwaukee Avenue. Is anybody here for that one? Okay. Mike?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is Lowe's second request for the outdoor landscape display area that would be located, again, in front of their garden center on the south side of the building. It would, merchandise would be limited to live goods, such as shrubs and flowers and trees and the, and the like. It would be displayed from April 1st to September 30th in compliance with village regulations. There'd be a decorative white fence around the perimeter of the display area. And similar to past years, there would be stop signs that would be located on the north and south side of the display area to slow and control traffic that's moving through that area, which will have a number of pedestrians. So if the board feels this request is appropriate, a motion approving the resolution attached to your packet is recommended, subject to the conditions that are contained within that resolution. And a representative of Lowe's is here to answer any questions that she has.
What's your name, please?
My name is Dan Miziako on Operations ASM.
Okay.
This is, this is in keeping with what we've done in the past at a number of locations, correct?
Yes, sir.
I see no problem.
All right. Any other comments or questions?
No, see no problem, so.
Is there a motion to approve?
So made. Second.
Okay, motion is second. Roll call.
Trustee Takaoka?
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Aye.
Trustee Markward?
Aye.
Trustee Forster?
Aye.
Trustee Cook?
Aye.
Trustee Schultz?
Aye.
President Burr?
Aye. Okay, motion carries.
Thanks, much.
Yeah. Approval and passage of resolution 2021-007, a resolution granting approval to operate an outdoor merchandise display and sales establishment for the Home Depot located at 493 North Milwaukee Avenue. Okay. Hello.
Hello.
Do you want to state your name for record?
Laura Lingeman, I'm manager over at Home Depot.
Yeah. Good, good. Okay. All right. Mike?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, same request as Home Depot has had in the past years, same location. I don't mean to sound redundant, but everything is, stop signs, everything else is the same as I just described to you in the previous case.
Okay.
And once again, it's the same as we've done in the past years and not had any problems with it?
Yeah, no problems from last year.
Okay.
Say quickly or motion it.
There's a motion, and is there a second?
Second.
Motion is second. Roll call, please.
Trustee Forster?
Aye.
Trustee Cook?
Aye.
Trustee Markward?
Aye.
Trustee Takaoka?
Aye.
Trustee Schultz?
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Aye.
President Burr?
Aye. Okay, motion carries.
Mr. President?
Yes.
May I have your indulgence for a few moments, sir?
Yeah.
Assistant village manager Petrillo? Please stand. John is an outstanding individual, and I'll get into the details as I go along here. About two weeks ago, I became more involved in the day-to-day operations of AMVET Post 66 down in Wheeling because I will be leaving your glorious presence shortly. And as a result, I found that they were operating some computers that were just beyond repair, Windows 7, which is six generations old. I called John to see if he had any connections with anybody who would have some used equipment that potentially could be of value. John came back to me and said, no, but I have a better idea. And to that end, I'd like to read this, dated March 16th. Mr. Jonathan Petrillo, dear friend of AMVET's Post 66, is with my deepest appreciation to extend this thank you to you for your generous donation to be used in the acquisition of a new computer in support of operations of Philip Carpenter Post 66 of the Illinois Division of the American Veterans, otherwise known as AMVETS. Philip Carpenter Post 66 of the Illinois Division of the American Veterans is an IRS Veterans Not-for-Profit Organization. Over the past year, Post 66 has supported a variety of veterans' activities in addition to other local civic community events. The AMVETS, with support like yours, can and will continue to be a powerful tool in supporting those who answered the call of duty. John is one of those that answered the call of duty. I had the privilege of speaking to the seniors at a luncheon last week, and John made sure he brought up my service, which really, the closest I got to harm's way was wrestling with deep-fat fryers to prepare, prepare meals. And the biggest punishment I, or distress I faced was the wrath of a two-star general if his tablecloth wasn't cleaned and pressed. John is a former member of the 82nd Airborne. Those are the guys that no one told them it's okay to stay inside of a perfectly fine-running aircraft. John was posted to Panama and has served not only this country, but this county, this village, and is currently serving it. And I just wanted to take this opportunity to personally thank John for his contributions as he has tried to thank me for mine, but his are much greater than mine and has been my honor and privilege to have been in service with this village to, with John. So to that end, this is for you. And again, I appreciate everything you've done.
I appreciate you, sir. I appreciate it. Thank you.
John was instrumental in the coat drive, and AMVET's Post 66 was able to generate, I don't know, 100 coats or whatever. And, yeah. And we were able to deliver all those up to Midwest Veterans Closet. And I really wanted to take this opportunity to thank John for his service and his commitment to this community and to the veterans' community. So thank you, John.
So could I assume that John was a good hire?
I think so. You know, he's only been here, what, 20 years? We'll find out.
Well, you know, in his new capacity as assistant village manager, which I'm happy we were able to bring John in. As, you know, the ex-chief.
Well, and the entire time he's been here, even when he was with the police department, Things for Veterans has always been at the, at the forefront.
Oh, yeah.
Great work. Great work.
Yeah. Operation Welcome Home.
Yeah.
Yeah, no. We even, well, what was it, last summer, we sent the one? We Deer Path, the, the young man who lived in Deer Path, we sent him off.
Yes, to the Marine Corps.
To the Marine Corps.
Yep.
So we also, initially, we had Operation Welcome Home, which was an initiative started by this board, and I believe Mr. Warner, and as you'll recall, Jim Holst, another Deer Path resident, was one of the first Marines to be sent over and one of the first we welcomed back. And I believe we're up to, we were up to 10. Initiative you're referring to, something that was recently started, I believe, by the Vernon Hills Post 1247, and that was also us forming up and standing with the parents and the family and friends as the young men and women departed.
Right.
So it was a very cool initiative, and I appreciate all the comments from trustee Schultz and everybody on the board. Love serving this community. I hope you know it extends beyond just those that serve. Everybody from our friends at SEDOL and the SRAs, to the local school districts, to the class of 2021 that we find now that we're partnering with to try to do some special moments as they get ready to graduate. We love serving this community and being part of it, the fabric of it all, whether you serve in uniform or serve the community in the capacity of a teacher or somebody that needs, to give somebody a little bit extra support and assistance, we love being part of it. And that goes for the entire staff. So thank you, Mayor, thank you to the board, and thank you, trustee Schultz, appreciate it.
Thank you, John. Okay. Any other business to come before the board? New business? If not, is there a motion to adjourn the board meeting and go into? Committee of the whole.
So made. Second.
Motion is second. Roll call.
Trustee Cook?
Aye.
Trustee Markward?
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Aye.
Trustee Schultz?
Aye.
Trustee Forster?
Aye.
Trustee Takaoka?
Aye.
President Burr?
Aye. Motion carries. I'd like to call the committee of the whole meeting to order. First item is approval of the committee of the whole meeting, minutes of March 2nd, 2021. Is there a motion to approve?
So made.
Second.
Motion is second. Comments, questions, corrections, deletions? Okay, roll call.
Trustee Cook?
Aye.
Trustee Takaoka?
Aye.
Trustee Schultz?
Aye.
Trustee Forster?
Aye.
Trustee Markward?
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Aye.
President Burr?
Aye. Motion carries. Next item is request for Melody Farms for approval of an outdoor special event on their property located at 849 Milwaukee Avenue.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. With the uncertainties this year with COVID, Melody Farm will be just taking one event at a time, maybe, maybe back again in the future for other requests. But for tonight, the board has requested to consider just one event, and this one will be called Hello Summer: A Taste of Melody Farm. There's two parts to this event. The first one is a VIP influencer that would include up to 30 attendees. There'd be food provided by Buttermilk, and Invicto's popsicle cart would also be out there. There'd be an acoustic guitarist that would be there to provide entertainment. The second part of the event would be the general public event. This would include up to 68 attendees. Guests would be encouraged to visit Melody Farm restaurants. Merchants would be offering coupons and other deals. There'd be a DJ on site for entertainment. And as you, as you know, Kuma's Corner will be there to serve beer and wine during the event. And this, and the consumption of beer and wine would be within a chained-off area on the central lawn on the property. The event would take place on Saturday, June 5th. The first segment would be from 10:00 AM to 11:00 AM, and then the second one from 12:00 PM to 2:00 PM. There's a rain date that would be scheduled for June 26th. So if the board feels the outdoor special event is appropriate... So if the board feels the outdoor special event is appropriate, staff should be directed to prepare a resolution approving the special event, subject to the conditions outlined in your packet. And representatives of Melody Farm are here to answer any questions that you may have.
Okay, you two want to identify yourselves, please?
I'm Lynn Tangora. I'm the event and marketing liaison at Melody Farm.
I'm Sarah Storey. I work for Regency Centers. I'm the property manager for Melody Farm.
Oh, okay. All right. Any questions for these two ladies from the board?
Who are the influencers?
So we're actually working on a list right now, but it'll be invite-only and it'll, will come from a pool of people that actually come to Melody Farm and take pictures and promote the shopping center and the merchants. So any of those people that you've seen on social media or Instagram that have come to promote Melody Farm, they will be invited. It's kind of a way to celebrate them for helping us out.
Kristen for sure, right, Mark?
Yeah, okay.
And this is basically in keeping with some of the events that were held last summer, correct, in terms?
Yeah, same location. The only difference this year, instead of coming to the board with a full schedule for the year, they're just going to take it one at a time. That's the only difference.
Okay. All right. Was there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion is second. Roll call.
Trustee Markford.
Aye.
Trustee Pakaoka.
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheimer.
Aye.
Trustee Schultz.
Aye.
Trustee Cook.
Aye.
Trustee Forster.
Aye.
President Burr.
Aye. Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, hope we have good weather. Okay. Budget presentation and discussion. Golf course, Kemper, management.
Mr. President, members of the board, if you recall, at the last board meeting, staff presented the fiscal year 2122 budget for the village.
Yeah.
The only ones we intentionally left off was the golf course. The only concern was is that if the night went too long and we had to split the budget presentation to two evenings, didn't want them to sit here throughout the night. So we purposely scheduled them separate tonight. So here tonight is Jason and his supervisor, Vince, to present the golf course budget and another innovative idea.
Okay.
Welcome. Thank you, thank you. Vince Suarez with Kemper Sports. Thank you for having us this evening. We wanted to take just a couple of minutes of your time, Mr. Mayor and members of the board, to go over just a FY '21 recap of Vernon Hills Golf Course and then get into a little bit FY '22 budget presentation.
And before you do, I'd just like to point out, Jason, our GM down there, I wanted to make sure everybody was aware of the fact that, how many properties do you guys manage? It's a rather extensive list, but Jason was nominated for GM of the Year with Kemper Sports, so.
Oh, that's great.
Congratulations.
Yeah. You stole my thunder. I was going to mention that in my presentation here.
We can mention it again. No worries.
I apologize. Feel free to mention it again, yes.
Yeah. So I just want to bring everybody back to, to March about this time in, in last year in 2020. It was March 13th, actually, 2020, when we basically shut down the golf course for, and it ended up being closed for six weeks. We didn't open the golf course again until May 1st. And when we opened the golf course, May 1st, we were put under heavy restriction from, from the state. We opened for two players, walking only every 15 minutes. We capped it at 32, normally we're at 32 players an hour and under this formula, we are at eight players an hour. Our available tee times were cut in half by three-quarters. When we moved to May, the end of May, May 29th, we were allowed to have foursomes out on the golf course. We were allowed to have individual riders and golf carts. We were allowed to open the patio for dining, but inside was still closed. Moving on to June of 2020, June 26th, we were allowed to have foursomes out on the golf course. We returned to two riders per golf cart and the grill was, the inside restaurant, the muni was capped at 50% capacity. We operated that way for most of 2020 until we got to October, when we were forced, when we had to close the inside restaurant once again. We didn't know what the pandemic was going to do to golf. Back in March, when, when we were at home, when most of us were at home, we were thinking that, that the worst of everything, like everybody else, that the golf industry was going to be impacted severely, that greens fees were going to be down, rounds could be down, revenue was going to be down. We were taking a look at all of our facilities nationwide, adjusting budgets, adjusting forecasts. As it turns out, you've got a couple of pictures on your screen, a map of the United States here, which is all in red. I kind of laughed because red typically means bad. In this case, red is good. Red means, all those states where you see red means that greens fees and rounds, rounds were up 2% or higher in those states. In Illinois, rounds were up 15%, over 15% in Illinois in calendar year 2020. Vernon Hills was no exception. We had rounds at Vernon Hills that were up 85% in 2020. And Jason's going to kind of go through a list of what those, what the historical rounds have been.
Sure. You know, like Vince said, nobody had any idea what the pandemic was going to do for our rounds of golf or for, for the golf business itself. If you look historically from 18 to 19 to 20, it was kind of going in a downward spiral. Revenues were down, as you know. It was just a bleak picture. And then, and then the pandemic hit and people didn't know what would happen. More people worked from home and they'd come out in the afternoons. We were busy. We were booked solid, actually. I mean, we'll talk about utilization real quick, but we were booked solid most afternoons. They'd come out after 2:30, 3 o'clock, you couldn't, couldn't get a tee time, which was good. And we hope to see, you know, we'll talk a little bit more about this, but we hope to see that continue as restrictions are still not fully eased, but a lot of people discover golf as a great family alternative. So we're going to capitalize on that, obviously. We'll talk about that a little bit more. As far as utilization, we are at 50% on weekends and 40% you know, as a whole, which is worlds ahead of what we were at before in previous years. So again, we hope that these trends continue and as things start to open up, we hope we see a lot of the, a lot of the customers stay customers and not go back to kind of what we did pre-pandemic.
One of the things, one of the metrics that we like to use as a company to gauge customer loyalty and customer's happiness and, and support is our true, is our True Review. Our True Review is a proprietary program. Every golfer, when they play Vernon Hills or when they play any of our properties, they get a survey the next day. And they're asked to fill out the survey and answer five simple questions. What their, what their service of the golf course was like, the course condition, the food rating, their overall rating of the facility, and the ultimate question being, would they recommend Vernon Hills to one of their friends? And it's called, a net promoter score is what we look for, net promoter score, NPS for short. The NPS is, to put them in, in plain terms, when you go to a, a company like Disney or Amazon, they typically have NPS ratings in the 90s. I don't know anybody that's gone to Disney and had a bad time. Then you get your cable companies where your NPS scores are typically in the teens. Our company, Kemper Sports, has a standard that we like to adhere to. We strive for 7.0 or better at our facilities. And you can see from FY '18 at 58.2, Jason and his team have made great strides over the years. They ended this year at 65.7. I will say that the areas that we, we like to look at, service rating, 9.0, recommendation rating, 9.0 there as well. So Jason and his team did an excellent job. They had 175 surveys filled out, which is almost double what they had in FY '20, which is on par considering the rounds almost doubled as well.
Okay. And then this is just kind of a quick, high-level overview of the financial performance and we can answer questions and get into it. But you see, we're going to go from, from years 20, 21, and then our budget for the coming season. Talk revenues. Revenues, we had about $251,000 last year, this past, in '20, this past season, which is last year and through April of this year, we're at 460, 278. So as we said, the pandemic really gave us a little shot in the arm, as most, most clubs did as well. Some of the clubs that were really heavy into food and beverage kind of took a hit because they were kind of limited as to what they could do. But you know, the muni's a perfect golf course for, for what transpired in the past year. Next year's budget, we're not going to get quite as aggressive. We think there's going to be quite a bit of interest in the spring, moving into the summer, but as things start to open up and more festivals start to come around, I think we may return to a little bit more normalcy in the golf business. Cost of goods, payroll expense and operating expenses. And the one thing I could say that jumps out is we, we were able to control operating expenses compared to last year in a busy year. We changed a few internal operations. I took a little bit more of a role and, and a little bit more opportunity to work out there. So we're going to continue that moving forward as well, as you see in the budget for, for this coming season. 2020, we had $194,000 loss. We are projecting about $33,000. I think that's going to be a little bit higher if we get some snow to melt real soon here. We had, we were open Fri-, we, we weren't going to be open Friday. I showed up just to do some work, the door rang, you know, everyone's calling, the door, people are knocking on doors, we went out doing 60 rounds of golf. So we had, we had over 185 people there Friday, Saturday and Sunday when we weren't going to even be open. So I think they're still chomping at the bit. We're going to see some, some good numbers, I think, in the spring. Good finish to this year and a strong start to next season as well. And then obviously we're budgeting, you know, kind of on par with what the previous years have been. 2020 was, was kind of a fluke year because we had, I think May and June were in the top five wettest springs we had, and then we also had one of the wettest Septembers. So we kind of got hit in the beginning and the end and lost a lot of that revenue. So we're, we're trying to, trying to keep it copacetic with, with years past.
So leading the way at, at Vernon Hills, at the muni, obviously our net promoter score, the customer service, the golfer happiness really shows in everything that Jason and his team, they, that they do at the facility. The staff, you know, I, I can't say enough about Jason as, as Trustee Cook already said, nominated for General Manager of the Year within our organization for 2020, just did a fabulous job, very well-respected GM in our organization. The community, the community facility, that golf course is obviously a community fixture, a community facility, brings residents from all over Vernon Hills into that facility. The restaurant portion, you know, just wonderful food. I've had the opportunity to eat there several times this year as well. The utilization, 50% utilization is, is a great weekend utilization. 40% is pretty much on par for most of our facilities during the week. You know, we, Jason will go into some of the technology upgrades that we've implemented for this coming season, which will even help improve utilization and get golfer information out to them much quicker. Of course, all the capital investments that we've made in the facility in the past with equipment, just really keep things moving in the right direction at the muni.
Okay, so moving to this year. I'm going to put my glasses on. I apologize. So we just upgraded the point-of-sale system to Chrono Golf, Lightspeed Chrono Golf. What this is going to do is going to give us better communication with all our guests and our golfers. It allows us to send out much more attractive email marketing campaigns. It's going to help the finance department because it's going to allow us to, to let them view financial records and we're going to be able to exchange information much cleaner and, and much more timely. It also with, with, it has a little add-on called Chrono Pitch, which is their marketing software. That's going to allow us to basically capture every email of every reservation made, everybody who comes through, and then we're going to be able to market them for our tournaments and events much more efficiently. There's going to be an interactive booking engine on the website so they can book tee times off the website and pay, which we had to, we had to rush to get going last year because of COVID. They made us pre-pay in the beginning, but it turned out to be a godsend. It actually works really well. So we're going to enhance that. We've got some more golfer development programs we're working on. We're going to continue offering free golf lessons to the Ladies League on Thursday and work with them. But we're really excited. We're going to do something on weekends in, in the later, later portion of day where families will get a significant discount to bring more families out with their little kids and get them out there and join the facilities, maybe have lunch, go play golf, hang out a little bit. As far as food and beverage, we are going to make some menu upgrades and offer some healthier choices this year. We're going to do some wraps and some cold sandwiches and try and, trying to appease the people who like to eat healthy and that kind of stuff and not the burger and bread kind of guy. And then we're going to expand some of our programs. We're going to, we're going to have several new tournaments this year. The tournament schedule is in the back of the book that we, we gave you guys that's on the marketing plan. We kind of took a little bit of, took a little advice from some of the, some of the local golfers, asked them what they want to see and, and what they would play and, and how do we get more people out there? And that was what, what we came up with. So we're excited and I think it's going to be a, I think it's going to be a great year. I think it's going to be a busy year in the beginning and I think it's, it's going to continue on. Hopefully all those new two Vernon Hills golfers that we captured, we can keep by marketing and stay in front of them.
That'd be great.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, and the Chrono Golf is already up and running. I got my email yesterday that my, to activate my account with Chrono Golf.
Yeah, they're very good about keeping in touch with people.
Yeah.
We can, we're going to actually, I'm going to sit with our marketing director. We're going to pre-plan the, you know, all the emails through the summer, through the first three months, and then they're done. And then they just send out automatically. So we might be getting bombarded with emails, but we'll stay in front of people.
Before we get into the second half of the presentation, does anybody have any questions on FY '21 or any of the budget items heading into FY '22?
I'm assuming you're, I have a question, just, are you going to expand upon the additional golfer development programs that you're thinking about? Okay. Because I think you got a lot, you know, including my son and his friends, you got a lot of new golfers that.
We're, I mean, we're looking to do some kind of a PGA Junior League.
Okay.
Play some of the other clubs in the area.
Right.
I mean, we're kind of handicapped because we really don't have a driving range.
Correct. I was going to ask, is there any place to put a range in the future?
That kind of hurts us with, with beginner golf and with people that are afraid to. We can use the nets. I mean, I've given lessons in the nets. We'll offer free lessons in the nets still.
What about like a simulator?
We're getting to that.
Okay.
We're coming to that.
Because I think lessons you could definitely.
Absolutely, absolutely.
You don't have to be on a range to do lessons.
We set us up for that.
Okay. And then I got another idea, but after, if you get into that.
All right, all right. We're willing to hear.
So, you know, getting into some of those golfer developmental programs, you know, we take, we, we actually started a, a initiative in the, a, a initiative in the home office and a task force on golfer development, golfer developmental programs and on retaining the golfer, the COVID golfer. Now, everybody knows that golf in 2020 was, I'm not going to say it an all-time high because the all-time high was bad hit 93 when Tiger Woods came out, but it was, it was a pretty good second. One of the things that we've looked at for Vernon Hills is a simulator. We would like the opportunity to continue the business at Vernon Hills past the spring, summer and fall, hitting early winter, winter and early spring. When a lot of times that golf, that clubhouse remains only busy on certain nights of the week, whether it be Thursday, Friday, Saturday. But there's seven days of the week that we provide, that are provide revenue opportunities. We had the opportunity to partner with one of our vendors, Foresight Sports, to look to bring a simulator into the club. Simulators bring continued practice during the offseason where the golfers can come in, rent simulator time, practice. It also provides continuation of leagues where our leagues at Vernon Hills would be able to continue playing golf well throughout the winter. It drives food and beverage revenue when those golfers are there for the leagues or those golfers are there for the weekend. And it, of course, continues to drive the offseason revenue as a whole. Foresight Sports is a leader in the industry. They started in the launch monitor and simulator business, entertainment software business. They first introduced themselves back in 2010. If any of you have been over to the PGA Superstore and hit golf balls in their simulators, they are Foresight Sport simulators. That's what these are. They have a couple of different packages, Foresight Sports. They have the, the birdie package, then they have the middle of the row, the eagle package, and they have the albatross package. They all have different, different components. The main difference is the launch monitor, which is overhead, and some of the other add-on options. The albatross package, which is what we're recommending for the village, also has a skill drill, so it's not just golf. You have the opportunity to do soccer skills. Right now, they're only doing soccer skills, but they're going to branch out to baseball, football and cricket at some point. You could do quarter kicks, passing, penalty kicks. So this is something that your local soccer clubs, your AYSO or your soccer clubs could rent, could rent time at the golf course during the offseason to practice their soccer skills. And it really is a training mechanism. And it really is a training mechanism. It picks up from a soccer standpoint, it would pick up a soccer ball, and it would tell you, it would show you the flight of the ball as it's heading towards the goal on, let's just say, a corner kick. So, somebody can figure out exactly what angle they want their foot in order for the soccer ball to land in a certain location, just like it does on the golf side. The courses come preloaded. There are several different golf courses that come. We've got all your favorites, Pebble Beach, Marion, St. Andrews, Karduski. All your favorite golf courses come preloaded as part of the packages. And we're looking at a total investment on the albatross package at about thirty-four thousand. With setup and build-out costs, we're looking at fifty thousand as the total all-in on the albatross package. We ran some ROI, investment return, on, on the particular simulators, and Jason's going to kind of walk through this.
Sure. I mean, Vince, Vince has helped me in getting this together, because we have some simulators at other facilities we manage. They stay busy throughout the winter. Obviously, you know, speaking with, with Mark and John and talking about what opportu- you know, we always want to address strengths, we consider as opportunities and threats, and, and one of the strengths we have is a great building. It's not being used to its full potential at all in the winter. It's empty, other than, you know, Wednesdays and Friday nights when our residents come down. So, you know, running numbers on this, if we go, we go through this, obviously, we could have leagues, and the leagues can continue on from, from when they, you know, pick it up in the fall, move through the winter. There's a facility on, I believe it's on sixty? I don't think they were open this year, but they had, they were full with leagues last year. They were wall-to-wall, they were turning people away. Some of our league members played in a league over there and said, why don't you guys get a simulator here? We can do this here. So, it's very simple. So, basically, running through rentals and leagues and just having the machine rented out. And one thing Vince didn't mention with the, real quick, I want to mention with the, what this machine does, if we have a party, if we rent a birthday party, we rent the hall for a birthday party, graduation party, or any type of party, we can do all kinds of ski ball, bowling, darts for the little kids, and then we can charge for the machine as well there. So, there's opportunities to make money everywhere with it.
Where would you put the machine?
We, we, I mean, Dave and, Dave would come by, we kind of walked around, looking at the, the, pretty much basically right in the middle of the room facing the window. And it would be built out in such that there's, there's padded, there's padded sides and tops, so they obviously can't hit the windows. But if you, a shot went astray and went almost straight right, it would hit a wall or a partition. It wouldn't hit anything other than a partition. Or, we were talking about possibly facing the front, the doors, you know, and then keep, what I'd like to do is keep half of the room available for food and beverage, because that's where we're going to make, obviously, make our money. Put up some pub tables, put up some areas where they can sit and gather while they're waiting to play, you know, order pizzas or whatever they may eat. But it would be in the main room.
And this is a mo-, this is a mobile unit, so it can go up for the offseason, and then it can come down.
Yeah.
So that it doesn't have to stay up full-time.
What, what is the dwell time, no one, taking it up and down? Because, you know, the, the building, to a certain extent, is a resident amenity. So, if somebody wants to have a bar mitzvah, birthday, anniversary, whatever, party during those winter months, you need to get all the netting and everything up and away so that the full floor, I could see the, the...
Projector.
Yeah, all that hardware up there, that could stay up in the air. I don't see that as a problem, but all the other accoutrement needs to be able to be taken down very quickly, like...
It could be...
A half hour without the help of Public Works, too. I mean, it needs to be something that the golf course is self-sustained on.
It could be, it could be taken down in about half a day, once it goes up.
Half a day.
But you're, when you're looking at fun, having private functions, those functions are typically known well ahead of time, and it can be taken down and put back up, you know, after those functions are, are done.
What is the size, and also height?
I'm sorry?
What is the size of the unit?
Yeah, so, you need about sixteen feet in depth, front to back, and then it's about, I can't, the, the exact dimensions, I don't have in front of me. I wanted to say it was fifteen feet on, on a width standpoint, and a height of about another twelve feet.
All right, I have a question. So, let's say you had the birdie package, can you, is it an upgrade to go to the albatross?
Yes.
So, is it software? I'm, I'm assuming all the hardware and the setup that you said for fifteen grand sets up the cage and everything, so if someone had the birdie, you could upgrade to the albatross at a later date?
No.
No.
The, the upgrade, the, the difference in the cost is in the monitors, is in the launch monitors.
Okay.
So, the GCQ, the GC Quad Launch Monitor, for instance, is a, is an eighteen-by-fourteen hitting zone.
Okay.
Okay? So, just over a foot and a half by a foot hitting zone, where the GC Hawk, which is part of the albatross package, that's a fifty-two-by-thirty hitting zone. So, there's different cameras in the GC Hawk, the top of the line, the upgraded package, the albatross, where they've got launch monitor or outer cameras and infrared sensors, high-speed sensors throughout the component which is above you, where the eagle or the birdie package...
Which is golf-only for the most...
No, no, that's golf and soccer.
I'm talking the, the birdie.
The birdie package is golf-only.
Right.
And it has a, a monitor that's actually on the ground.
Right, so I get the PGA Store.
Yes.
What I've hit on. All right, so, my que, my, my thing is this, I think you could keep this busy with golf lessons, leagues, people just renting time. There's enough golfers in this town, absolutely, would, would...
Sure.
Would definitely come here. I don't think that we would necessarily have to go to the albatross out of the box, because quite honestly, I think you could fill it with the golf alone, and I think I would focus on the lessons aspect. PGA Store does a ton of lessons over there. And, you know, I've got my son lessons there, and quite honestly, they're so busy that, you know, you got to book well in advance.
Yep.
Now, that's, so, my thing is, maybe you partner with the PGA Store or Golf Galaxy, you do lessons, you do club fittings, like they do at Golf Tech, right? Maybe we go approach, you know, some of the golf course vendors, maybe through PGA, work it through PGA, and we do a, a lessons for the kids. I think kids could be huge from a lessons perspective.
Absolutely. We can get the...
So, to me, I think this is a great idea, but I don't necessarily, I don't think we should, we need the albatross, because quite honestly, I don't think it would be used as much, and I think golf would absolutely be enough to, you know, fill the simulator.
Yep.
These things are always busy. The golf domes, displays, I mean, they all have simulators, they're busy.
So, yes, they are. The birdie package is, is an initial investment of just under nineteen thousand, eighteen thousand, five hundred, the components themselves. And then, there'll be some additional build-outs. So, we would look...
Sure.
You know, we would look to cap that at thirty thousand on the birdie.
Right.
If that's what we're looking to go with.
Right. Yeah, I would, that would be my opinion, and I, again, just being a, well, I like to golf, but I know something like this would definitely get filled in. Yes, you're right, the food and beverage aspect comes along with it.
Want to finish?
Yeah, I, I tend to agree with Greg, but I'd really, really want to see if you could engineer down to an hour's time or whatever to be able to...
Oh, the takedown?
Well, the, the, going to the birdie package would make the tear-down significantly quicker, I would imagine.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It would. So, we ran, we ran, Jason was, we ran some ROI packages, and we did it on a very, you know, very small scale, kind of looking at a very conservative ROI. Golf revenue, we believe will bring in an extra fourteen thousand in golf revenue during the offseason, and about an extra nine thousand in food and beverage revenue.
Yeah.
So, we actually believe that this unit will pay for itself within two years.
No, I believe it. I know plenty of my neighbors, I guarantee, we're, we'd be booking times on the weekend.
The unit is mobile, and a thought of during winter time, would it be a possibility to put it into the pro shop? I was looking at height, so I, I don't know. As you were saying, in the center of the floor, it's a possibility. Jim brought up the fact that because of parties, but if you were able to move it into the pro shop, it's a possibility of space.
I don't think there's enough space in the pro shop.
Yeah, I don't think that's a big...
We initially, yeah, no, yeah, we, yeah, Mike, we initially looked at the space in front of the fireplace, which is kind of off to the side, but it's about a foot and a half to two feet short, where somebody may hit a club. We don't want them to hit the monitor, we don't want them to hit the wall or the, or the, any substructure. It's just a hair too short.
What about the space between the pillars going, aiming at the wall?
That was another spot we looked at, yeah.
Is that...
I don't know if there's going to be enough. We have to talk to the, the people from Foresight.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because that would, then it's a little, even more, a little more out of sight, out of mind.
It is, and it gives us more seating capacity around the outside as well.
Right.
Yeah, we're going to maximize seating, however, it's done to get more pub tables or, or however we do it, if we're loosened up and we can bring that many people, and we'll be able to, you know, seat people around it, put little, you know, seating areas or leather pit group in the corner and just get as many people. I mean, the object is obviously get as many people from the neighborhood down there as we can, using, using the, using the machines.
Making a, a, a true year-round facility.
Yeah. Just two points of information for you. We're going to meet on Saturday. This is post twelve forty-seven, the American Legion. They're committed to starting bingo.
Okay.
The first Thursday of every month, October through April.
Okay.
So, we're going to need maximum seating capacity on those dates. And there's also going to be a discussion of the Support the Heroes golf outing for the American Legion Post. Last two years, it's been in late August, but we'll get back to you after the meeting on Saturday.
He's currently got it scheduled.
Okay, okay, good.
I think, on, on your tentative schedule, right?
Yeah, yeah, that, that, yeah, definitely.
And in closing...
It's on the tentative schedule for August twenty.
Yeah, it's on that page in the marketing plan, yep.
So, after you buy the simulator, is there like a service contract thereafter? Like, I'm assuming there's software upgrades or stuff like that?
Yeah, there are software upgrades, with a two-year warranty.
Right.
Yeah.
Is there a service agreement thereafter?
There's no service agreement thereafter, no.
Oh, really? So, then the software upgrades are no charge?
Yep. Yep, I mean, there's upgrades if we decide to bring in additional golf courses, like other than the fifteen or twenty golf courses that are included, then we would have to pay for those.
Okay. And then, who, let's say there's some issues with the, you know, the cameras, who do you call?
We call Foresight Sports.
You call Foresight?
Yep.
Take support.
Where are they located? I mean, how long would it...
They're in California, but they've got...
So, like, what would be the downtime? Let's see one of the things stop working.
Typically, what we'll do, because we, obviously, we have national contracts with them, typically, we'll send back a unit to repair this at the same time. So, the downtime is minimal.
All right.
I would like, you know, in closing, just to let everybody know that this, the simulator that we just proposed here, the thirty thousand dollar increase, is not part of the FY twenty-two budget that we presented or that you have in your packets. So, any increase on the simulator would have to be taken into consideration.
Sure.
The way it stands right now, the proposed budget for the golf course is four hundred and thirty-four thousand, five hundred and sixty-four dollars. If the board were to entertain the, I forget, the birdie system?
The birdie.
The birdie. At thirty thousand dollars, that would be, we would ask for a motion to approve the golf course budget in the amount of four hundred and sixty-four thousand, five hundred and sixty-four dollars.
Motion to approve.
Second.
At the four sixty-four, five sixty-four.
Yes.
Now, let's see the price again.
Four six four, five six four.
Oh, no, I'm talking the, the different pack. I just want to...
Okay, there's a motion and a second.
Yeah.
Roll call.
The difference is, Craig, or the price?
Or the price.
Aye.
Okay, all right.
Trustee Mark Fart?
Aye.
Trustee Forster?
Aye.
Trustee Opferman?
Aye.
Trustee Joel?
Aye.
Trustee Oliver?
Aye.
Press for her.
All right, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys. Appreciate your help.
Thank you.
And I also want to, before you leave, staff did an incredible job when we did reopen the golf course and that, in terms of sanitizing and stuff, and, and a, a great reorganization of how the carts were handled and, and where clean carts were as opposed to carts that were used and that, and, and everything ran really well. It was, it was, it was very well done.
Wait, I got one more thing. I thought we're, I got one more idea that I wanted to throw out there.
Yeah.
So, what do you think? I know you're, did you do like Burger Night or Pizza Night over there?
We were talking about doing Burger Night.
Yeah, that's...
We, we bought a grill to cook outside now.
Okay.
So, and, and we didn't mention that, but there's, there's a gas grill and a charcoal grill. We're going to be outside on the patio on the weekends cooking.
Okay.
So, you know, the neighborhood.
So, here's my idea, barbecue night.
Sure.
Now, the reason why I say barbecue night, because I know, I know a bunch of people in Vernon Hills, we, we smoke, whether on a green egg or pellet smokers. Huh? What? Oh, well.
Got to go to Mandalay.
If we could do, I, I think I could rally enough, I could rally some people, if we did a barbecue night, like, once a month, like, and you provide, like, the pork shoulder, we'll smoke it and we'll bring it back in trays, and you sell the sandwiches. I think that could get very popular, so I could get a half a dozen guys involved.
We are, we are up, ready to do anything.
Huh? You'd be open to that idea?
Absolutely.
Because I already threw it by some people, and I go, what if, I, what if the Village Golf Course had a barbecue night, would you guys...
You know, I mean, we really need to, we need to think outside the box a little bit and bring some new stuff to invigorate. So, that's one of them, that's good.
Right.
Yeah, absolutely.
Because then, next year, then, it would be like, maybe get a pellet grill, because then you can smoke. But anyway, that's...
We'll build one.
Those are nice.
Well, that's the other nice thing, is, is Jason and his staff have been coming up with new stuff to do and everything like that. I mean, I can personally testify, we, this was the first year we had the famous, now, now-famous North-South Cup.
Yeah.
With, against, yeah, against a, another golf course down on the, south of Chicago. And we brought the cup back here, so we're going to play them every year now, and this is something that was new, and it brought in a bunch of golfers, and, and everybody had a good time, so there's, you know, kudos for constantly tweaking it to make it a little better, a little more attractive.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you, thank you. Yeah, we enjoy it, we have fun.
Now the next capital improvement is to somehow cover the creek, and other than that, we're in good shape.
Actually, no, we do have a, we've always talked about as a fire pit. And I don't know if we wanted to engage in that finally, or, I mean.
All right, listen, when I came in, the first thing I said was, where's the fire pit?
There you go.
We've got the fireplace.
Out in front of the club.
Yes.
Yeah, out, outside somewhere, yeah.
Well, not at the deck.
Oh, no, 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 no.
Yeah.
No, out on the green space that, yeah, is not part of the course, but yes.
Well, the idea we'll work on. All right, thank you, everybody.
All right, guys, thanks. All right, is there reps here from Comcast or do we need them or?
We have Carmen.
Well, Carmen's, okay.
I watch a lot of TV, so I can give the.
Yeah, yeah, don't feel bad.
Stayed in the Holiday Express, too.
Absolutely. Good evening, everyone. Carmen Forte from Kleintor and Jenkins. I am here to present the upcoming franchise agreement extension with Comcast for cable television services. The current agreement expires on July 18th of 2021. The proposed agreement was prepared in negotiation by our office, Frank Duel from Comcast, and also with much support and assistance by Mike Stordo up in the box this evening. Thank you, Mike. The current agreement, or the proposed agreement is fairly similar to the current agreement. There are no changes in the franchise fees. They're capped at 5% via the Cable Act, they will remain at that amount. The agreement allows for an increase of that fee if the Cable Act allows for it. The majority of the other changes had to do with updating statutory references within the agreement to comply with current statutes and, and guidance. The biggest change is to the public education and government access programming ability of the village. It's currently on Channel 4. In speaking with, with Mike Stordo, we, we discussed potentially moving that channel over to a high-definition format as some communities have done. So this agreement allows for that. It allows for a five-year check date to, to, to see how that progress is going, if the village would like to go to that format. It also allows for the expansion of the, this type of program, also known as PEG, P-E-G, programming to a second channel if the village would like that. Almost all of the proposed changes that we gave to Comcast, they accepted. Everything else is pretty much, is, is, currently exists. And it does provide one outlet per eligible government building in the village as it did before. If anyone has any questions or comments, please let me know. We would recommend that this move on to the full board for approval at the next meeting. We'll provide it back to Comcast prior to the expiration of the current agreement.
Any comments or questions from the board on this?
Well, not a whole lot we can do about it. I mean, they are a monopoly and we just have to, I mean, it's.
What AT&amp;T is available in town?
But it's not cable, that's not a cable.
Not cable, no.
Company.
No.
Satellite.
Yeah, okay, that's right, yeah.
Well, you have a number of other vendors now, so it isn't as bad as it used to be. And they, they've done a pretty good job of upgrading equipment recently in town.
Wait, AT&amp;T offers something via the DSL line, don't they?
It's not governed by the, the same statute that Comcast is governed by. So a franchise with AT&amp;T would be a different animal altogether.
Okay, but they are, they are the competition, so to speak. It's a different methodology of delivery, but from our standpoint here.
Yeah, yeah.
We only have this one entity to work with and that's it.
The thing is with AT&amp;T, they don't offer high-speed internet in here.
What are their highest?
It's not even close to the Comcast, what we can get at Comcast. And believe me, I call every time, it's like, you got high speed in this area? No. That's the issue. We, you have, if you want high speed, you have no choice but to be with Xfinity.
Right.
Yeah.
Well, typically Comcast is around 100 megabits.
You can get more than that, I mean, there's.
Well, you can pay for more, but on your, on your basic. And AT&amp;T is probably in the 30 to 50 range.
It's negligible now with Zoom, you got kids at home, you have people working from home, you're fighting for bandwidth. It's not even, not even really a consideration at this point. It's unfortunate, but that allows them to have a monopoly.
The, the language in the franchise agreement is, is really largely based on the model that was negotiated by the Metropolitan Mayor's Caucus in 2010. You know, our firm assisted back then, and it gets tweaked, it continues to get tweaked, but the tweaks are not major, as Carmen outlined, they're, they're minor. You know, the, the real important factor here is the franchise fee we continue to get, which is 5% currently, which is significant. And as Carmen mentioned, that could go up statutorily, and we're, we're in line to take advantage of that if, if in fact it does.
Okay, is there a motion to approve?
Why, is, what are we looking for? Because this is committee of the whole, we're just looking to draft.
Motion, if I may.
Yeah.
Motion to direct staff to draft an ordinance to be presented at the next board meeting for the approval of a 10-year franchise agreement with Comcast as presented.
So made.
Second.
Motion is second. If there's no further comments or questions, roll call.
Trusty Schultz?
Aye.
Trusty Takaoka?
Aye.
Trusty Marford?
Aye.
Trusty Forster?
Aye.
Trusty Oppenheimer?
Aye.
Trusty Cook?
Aye.
President Burr?
Hi, motion carries, this would be on the next board meeting agenda.
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right, next is social service grants.
Thank you, Mr. President. At the March 2nd Village Board Meeting, the board approved a motion to adopt the 2122 Social Service Grant Program in the amount of $40,000. As has been the custom and practice of the village, staff met with two trustees, trustees Takaoka and trustee Cook to review the applications that we received and make recommendations to the full board as to how the grants should be awarded. Included in your board packets was a spreadsheet that outlined the organizations that applied, the amounts awarded last year, the amounts that they were, that they were requesting this year. And then the highlighted column is the amount that we had agreed as far as a recommendation to the full board. There's only, but there were only two changes. Virtually everyone that requested, or that received an award last year received an identical award this year. The only addition was, is there was one group, the senior issues, that did not apply again this year. Lake County Haven is a brand-new organization that applied. Lake County Haven, essentially, it's a, a home for women and their children to achieve permanent independent living. They provide shelter, housing, and support for women and their families in need that supplement some of the other services that are performed in the county. They requested a $2,500 grant and, and the group suggested a $2,000 grant. The other one is the Special Recreation Association of Lake County. They were awarded $4,500 last year, requested $7,500 this year, and the group recommended to approve a $500 increase, making it an even $5,000.
Yeah, plus we gave, well, gave them the bus.
Exactly.
For a dollar.
Exactly.
So they, they've done well at the.
And they are extremely appreciative of everything the village has done. There's no, there's no official action needs to be taken tonight by the board. But if there is concurrence, then we'll go ahead and draft an ordinance that'll appear on the April 7th omnibus agenda in the amounts that were specified here in the spreadsheet.
This seat concurs. Yeah.
Absolutely.
Okay, yeah, it'll just creep up on the 7th for, for the final vote.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much.
Sure.
And thank you to the trustees for taking the time in the middle of the day to participate.
No problem.
Okay. That's about it, huh? So is there a motion to adjourn the committee at all?
So made.
Second.
Motion is second. We don't have a closed session. No, okay. There's a motion and a second, roll call.
Trusty Forster?
Aye.
Trusty Oppenheimer?
Aye.
Trusty Marford?
Aye.
Trusty Cook?
Aye.
Trusty Takaoka?
Aye.
Trusty Schultz?
Aye.
President Burr?
Hi, motion carries, good night, and we'll see you in, in April. So, all right, thank you.
Did you get an email from?
No, I didn't.